The Lindmar Board Meeting will be called to order at 5:00 PM in the boardroom of the Learning Resource Center. Row will be taken to determine a quorum.
Buckholz.
Here.
Eisenberg.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Maury.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Walt.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Quorum is present at 5:00.
Thank you. Adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next, we have audience communication. At this time, the board invites the public to speak on items related to the agenda or district. The board will receive and acknowledge comments but will not engage in a dialogue with the speaker because of the set agenda for the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. Remarks should not contain names or other identifying information about students, teachers, administrators, or other personnel. At this time, if anyone would like to speak, may come forward. Make sure you write down your name and address and say your name loudly for us, please.
Hello, my name's Matt Rollinger. I've got two children in the Lindmar District. Couple of weeks ago, in the board meeting, there was some discussion relating to some candidate signs that had Lindmar logo on it. And there was some discussion had on that and was voted that having that logo would be an endorsement possibly from the school of that candidate. And so, it was voted that that was not going to be allowed. I happen to agree with that, with that decision. I am curious, though, if the board has heard of the much larger issue, very similar that happened in the last couple of weeks, that was brought to administration's attention. There was a faculty member from this school using public equipment, using Lindmar emails to do business on behalf of a political, I'll just call it a political group, for the sole purpose of that political group to give endorsements to candidates. I want to know if the board is going to make sure that they remedy that the same way they did with those signs. I went to administration and gave three, gave the administration three chances to remedy the situation. And all I was told was, "We have talked to them. It won't happen again." Well, the signs, you didn't just say, "What you have is okay. Just don't do it anymore." I want to make sure that this does not happen. It needs to be fair for everyone. And this is a lot bigger issue than a logo on a sign. I want to have an answer from someone on this board by 5:00 on Wednesday on what is going to be done to remedy this. Because like I said, I have talked to the administration more than once on it with no acceptable remedy. It needs to be fixed. It needs to make sure that it doesn't affect this school board election. This district does not need any more of that kind of bad press in this election. I want to make sure everyone gets treated the same here. Everyone. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this time?
Good evening. I'm Scott Fones, 2231 Tamarack Circle. I pledge allegiance to my flag and the nation and the republic for which it stands. One nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There is your Pledge of Allegiance, published September 8th, 1892 in the Youth Companion. It was published as part of a program to celebrate, interestingly enough, Columbus Day. Because Jim Upman, who ran the Youth Companion, didn't think that Americans in 1892 were patriotic enough. Now, we had here just, I think, two school board meetings ago, I think there was a brief conversation about the Pledge of Allegiance. And what do we tell kids if they ask, "What does the pledge mean?" To be candid, I'm not sure that there are instructors or a lot of parents that are really kind of equipped to answer that question. I'm going to set aside the fact that when we talk about meaning, we're talking about values anyway. But just understanding kind of the history and giving that information just really isn't there. And when we start talking about meaning, and I know that you've got to tell people something. But perhaps maybe the idea should be, you know what, it's about a bunch of people in Des Moines who think the only way you can be patriotic is if you say those 31 words. Your actions don't matter. You don't have to actually make a sacrifice. You don't have to follow the rules. You just have to say the words and that'll be enough. America's got a long history of saying the words, but quite frankly, not living up to the ideals. We're trying, and we're trying to get better all the time, but that's one of the things that we could probably work on a little bit. So when you have to answer that question, maybe the simplest answer is, it means whatever you think it means to you. Thank you all very much for your time, your service and your time.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Newton, parent of two in this district. Today, I would like to discuss the impacts on adverse childhood experiences. These are traumatic events that occur during childhood before a child is at the age of 18 and have a significant impact on physical, emotional, and mental health throughout the entire life of that child and can damage the sense of safety, stability, or bonding. Some examples include abuse, which can be physical, mental, emotional, or sexual; neglect, which can be physical or emotional; domestic violence, divorce, and separation; substance misuse by a member of the household; mental illness of a member of the household; all things I'm sure some of our nearly 8,000 students already experience in this district. Adverse experiences at a young age can be problematic because children are especially vulnerable to the effects of trauma. Their brains are still developing. The long-term data on COVID is not there, but we do know information on COVID environment itself. Abuse in children, neglect on children, domestic violence and spousal abuse, depression and anxiety, and suicide, these are all at an all-time high. Now add that our children are currently being raised in fear, plagued with anxiety, and in desperate need of normal social interaction. They've been conditioned to fear each other, fear this world, fear illnesses and viruses, and even fear the fresh air that they should be breathing. We have created an environment that children are in fear of being self-isolated. And self-isolation is the number one risk for depression and anxiety and suicide. Now, I have to point out and ask why there was such a lack of discussion regarding this when you all were choosing to re-mask our children. Members of the board, do the benefits outweigh the risk of the children in COVID? Make your decision make sense. Children are extremely resilient, and natural exposures to viruses help build up an even stronger immune system for them. The social and emotional effect of our choices now will affect our children for the years to come. This is unnecessary trauma that we don't even fully understand, and future problems will come from this. My hopes are that the fight you were seeing from parents today will now ripple into a change that is necessary for our schools to get back on track and back to normal. It's time to stop treating these children like disease-ridden super spiders and get back to what our children need. Socialization and a focus again on quality education. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Christina Bryan. I have four kids in this district. I wasn't going to talk tonight. I just, after hearing that, I wanted to reach out and let you guys know that there is a lot of virtual bullying happening and mass numbers. There is a massive group chat on Snapchat for Boulder Peak. That is fifth and sixth grade. A one child can turn it into a hate group. They named it the KK Hate Group. So massive amount of numbers turned into a massive hate group for my daughter yesterday. And I asked, and I'm very into the social media and I'm aware of what was happening. What I wasn't ready for was other moms to say, "Is KK okay?" I saw what they were saying. My daughter left that group multiple times and kids kept adding her back and then taking screenshots of what half the kids were saying that weren't defending her and sending it back. She's 10. I'm not worried what COVID's going to do to her. I'm worried about what other kids are going to do to her. We are divided as a school district in general. But if it's not going to get better, if parents aren't doing stuff, if we're not talking to our students, if we're not reaching out to parents and saying, "Hey, make sure you're looking at your kids' social media platforms." Those boys were talking about their private parts in a group chat that was named Boulder Peak. We need to be more on it. You guys have to help do this too. Like, as parents and as staff, we have to make sure the bullying, it starts at home. Like, I'm aware. Like, I am on top of things at home. It took one day. She came home from a birthday party and said, "Something happened," and we started dealing with it. And then today, I called the principal. They helped. Everybody's doing their job, but parents have to come together and work on this too. And like, just make sure that we're aware. Hey, kids, like, check in with your kids. Just reaching out from the school, making sure the school is talking to these kids about what social media can do to other students. Make it so it's safe to come and tell a teacher, "Hey, the entire school is part of a group chat for hate." Now, my daughter gets punished, is what it feels like tonight, because I have to take that platform away from her for her own safety, to make sure that she doesn't have a lot of hate. And I'm willing to do that, but parents have to, like, start talking to their kids. And I just wanted to publicly come out here and reach out to everybody watching and at home and like, check in with your kids. If you don't know what they're doing on their phone, they're going to be part of the problem too. So just hopefully, our schools can have more resources, have the teachers have conversations, and the counselors have, like, this results in bad things. Right? Like, let's make sure our kids are not going to hurt themselves because a massive amount of people can get on a screen and bully someone. We're all, we're in this day and age, everyone's dealing with this. So I just want to make sure, like, check in with your kids, you guys, because other people's kids are going to hurt themselves because of your children doing these things. And I don't want that to happen to our kids. Thank you, guys.
My name is Barbara Johnson. I have four kids in this district. Here we go again. Another meeting, and it feels like a dead end with no answers. You've been asked to make it make sense, and yet you've stayed silent. You continue to allow political agendas within our schools, and you've made it very clear you have no interest in discontinuing this practice. You have signage, and you've even sent emails with statements like, "Comply and listen to what you're told." And yet, you're still somehow avoiding lawsuits. We want answers, and they need to make sense. How does this board run without a political entity? If you choose to continue to run this way, can we, as parents, ask for everyone's resignation on the board for lack of accountability? Are you going to do your jobs and carry out what you signed up to do? How do you plan to leave your personal opinions out of decision-making? I think I speak for everyone in the district when I say that we deserve answers. So please feel free to refer back to the statement that I made at the last meeting, if that'll help jog your memories. So respectfully, I'm asking the board to please release a public statement with these answers and with evidence and fact-based information, not opinions, and not help from the people in the Lynn County Democratic Party who represent them. And just to point out, if you're going to speak to those people, you might want to make sure that they aren't the same ones that are harassing and making threats to others, or have a criminal record for those such acts. Iowa Courts Online is a great source, in case you're wondering. So no more politics, just education, and please, make it make sense. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Joe Stutler. I live in the district. About a month ago, someone at this meeting, or at that meeting, spoke about a very pressing issue that's affecting our district, and that's the flags missing from our classrooms. Our students are not getting their share of freedom. Iowa Code, Chapter 39A, oop, sorry, that's election misconduct. You guys don't care about that. Iowa Code 280.5 covers the flag and pledge. And this is very special to me, the flag and pledge, because I'm a combat veteran. I've deployed, spent an awful lot of years in the military. And so, yeah, it kind of makes sense. But a little bit more than that. I was born and raised in Rome, New York. Rome, New York's the home of, well, back then, Fort Schuyler, Fort Stanwix. That's where the first United States official flag, as approved by Congress, was flown in the face of the enemy back on August 3rd, 1777. That flag was made from shirts that the soldiers cut up, their white shirts, red flannels from the petticoats, and a blue field from one of the officers' jackets. That's about a mile and a half from my house, maybe a little less, like if you were to walk from here down to, say, Granger House. Going up the other direction, say up to Low Park, I could walk to the gravesite of Francis Bellamy, the author of the Pledge of Allegiance, who wrote those famous words, "I pledge allegiance to my flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Yep, right there in the middle of them, the flag and the pledge have serious meaning to me, because I was born right in the middle of that stuff. I got a solution, because we're missing flags in our schools, and our kids are not getting the freedoms that they so deserve. So, being a leader and not just somebody that's going to come and share my passion, I bought 600 flags. 600 flags that I donate to the school district, one for every classroom plus extras. They do meet Iowa Code. Each classroom, which the pledge will be said, is recited pursuant to the section, "They shall display the United States flag during recitation." There it is. Flag for each classroom. It also says that you can't force kids to say the pledge too, so just keep that in mind. Now, these flags, I've personally checked them, and they emanate just as much freedom as the flag out on the flagpole, that one in the corner, the one that flew over my site in the battlefield, et cetera. That's the flag. They put out just as much. But they put out way more than campaign signs that have flags on them or flag clothing or, you know, those things that violate US Code. So your kids can get back to studying. They'll have all the freedom they need. The passionate gentlemen can take passionate management classes. Go on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I wasn't going, my name's Jerrilyn Jones. I have two children in the district. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but this is the second time that the flag has been brought up. And I just want to actually come to the board's defense on this and state that when we did cover the flag stuff, I want to say a couple meetings ago, that it was pointed out that there was going to be education on what these children were going to be reciting to. That there was going to be just education on it, whether it's to the teachers or whether it's the students or whatever. So I just wanted to say that I appreciated that comment in previous meetings and that I didn't feel like this was called for. So, thank you.
Hello, Melissa Walker. I also have two children in the district. I just wanted to comment on the presentation that's going to be happening tonight regarding the athletic department. I know that this is a program that many of us love. My children have both been involved in the Lindmar Athletic Department across country, in track, in baseball, in football, throughout many other years. And I have heard from many different parents across the district over these past few years that they have a great love for this program, but especially as people get to the high school, I have started to hear some concerns around that as we've continued to grow as a district that it feels very much like a pay-to-play sort of thing, that the participation, that there seems to be, everybody has the opportunity to have access to our programs, but those that have the privilege to be able to live in families that have access to clubs and travel leagues and private lessons seem to be those that have the ability to earn those spots. That because we have such limited number of players, that those are the ones that have the opportunity to be able to build the skills over time to be able to have those select few spots. And so, I would really love to be able to hear some meaningful dialogue about how, as we continue to grow to be such a large district, how we can create additional opportunities for other students in addition to those five to 10 students who are going to get those premium spots on the team that are going to get that playing time, so that we can really have more equitable playing time and opportunities to have more meaningful participation for all of our students that really love basketball, that really love tennis, that really love those other activities, but don't really have the opportunity to be taking private lessons, to build up their skills for 10 years. And so, I would love to have that as part of the dialogue this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
All right. I have a few minutes to jot down some notes here.
Could you please state your name?
I will be getting to that.
Okay.
Good to see you all. I'm Cody Nye. I've had a young student in the Lindmar District. I spoke at the last meeting. Just a heads up, I'll plan to be sort of a fixture here as much as I can here on L. Basically, I have concerns regarding a lot of the decision-making around masking, the lack of logic, the rationale that's gone into that decision-making. My main concern, as you may recall, is the decision to mandate the masks for the least vulnerable population of students in this district. However, today, I wanted to start off by talking about good policymaking. When policymaking, you go through the process of weighing risks and benefits, ultimately moving forward with the proposal or decision that is the most good for the largest number of students. And as you know, the world's not always perfect. We don't live in utopia. So there's always going to be, and this isn't a sound callous, and not that I don't have empathy, but there are going to be externalities and people that are adversely affected. So essentially, my contention is this mask decision doesn't do the most good for the greatest number of students. And in fact, I would argue quite the opposite. I'd venture to say not many of us here have a whole lot of data on the long-term effects of covering the faces of young children so they can't see their peers, read their facial cues during their most formative years. The reason for the lack of that data, there haven't been studies on this because it'd be deemed unethical to treat young children like that, much like that Baby Albert experiment where they scared a young infant whenever he saw a white rabbit. Those kinds of studies aren't done anymore because it's not safe for children's development. Next, I'd like to touch on the metrics by which we're making these decisions. I don't know why we're making decisions about masking for the least-at-risk population based on case numbers. We don't do that for other illnesses in school. We don't make decisions for kids. We don't let school out if there's flu going around the classroom. Now that we know that these students aren't at risk or far less risk than other populations, it's ridiculous to base it off of the case count. Was that my three minutes over?
That's your three minutes.
I guess I can put a point. Uh, I guess I can, uh, put a point on this, I'll, I'll bring the rest of it back to the next meeting. But the decision to continue with masking isn't based on the right metrics. Uh, again, not, not, to not be empathetic, or to seem callous, uh, I contacted Lynn County Public Health, there have been zero deaths under 18.
Okay, enough, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we will continue. Okay, next we have Superintendent Update, please.
Yeah, several things to update the board on, um, since the last two weeks. First of all, our Facility Advisory Committee, um, will be meeting again here in the next couple of weeks, excited to get them together again, it's been several months since we last met, and that is because OPN Architects has been hard at work, um, taking the feedback they've put together from the committees, um, into some potential master plans or concepts of what that will look like, so excited to get that group back together again in early November. Um, I hope during that meeting time, we'll be able to come together with some consensus and agreements on next steps, um, and hopefully have that committee then report to the board in our December board meeting. So I think that's a, a good timing, um, which was right along with the same timeline we started back, um, gosh, nine, 10 months ago, we started this process, we're pretty much still right on track for that work. Um, and then at that time, the board will have some prioritization work starting in January and February, to really review the recommendations from the committee, and break down the next steps in that, uh, facility planning process. So, it's been a great group to work with, it's been a fun process, and, uh, look forward to our next meeting in November, and then bringing that to the board hopefully in December as well. So, it's one giving updates, it's been a little while since that committee has met. Um, and the next steps will be a little more informational for you here, very shortly, so. Uh, next couple of things I want to touch base on are all from, uh, Executive Leaders of School Administrators of Iowa, um, meetings we had on Thursday afternoon and Friday morning of last week. A couple of really interesting topics that are more statewide perspective with Linnmar impacts. The first one, they spent a lot of time talking about teacher shortage data, uh, something we have talked about here at recent board meetings, and we've talked about on and off the last several years, seeing the, uh, the teacher shortage coming our way. Uh, their data from statewide information reflects that, and what we're experiencing here as well. Couple of key pieces they highlighted, uh, the last year they have data, um, right now, the most recent year they have data as far as number of teachers coming out of the Iowa College System in the fields of education, public and private schools, is the year 2019, '20, and they have 1,768 teachers coming out of the program in that year. Sounds like a pretty good-sized number, so you'll think about the number of schools in Iowa and beyond, and then you compare that to just three years before that, in 2016, '17, there was 2,114 teachers coming out of the same system at that time. The previous 10 years before 2016, '17, had all ranged between 2,300 and 2,400 teachers, um, coming out of the system as well. So you definitely see the trend is going the wrong direction, as far as the state of Iowa producing teachers, no, obviously we don't hire just teachers in Iowa, but that is a big portion of our hiring process. If you go to more regional data, they had a little bit of Midwest data as well, uh, teacher prep programs across the Midwest are also down 17% over the last 10 years as well, so it's not just an Iowa challenge, it is, um, in the Midwest especially. Two other pieces of data they had, not so much on the preparation aspect of it, uh, but on the teacher retention rate, in Iowa is above 90% each year, uh, which is still above the national average, um, it has not seen too much of a dip the last couple of years, hopefully that will continue, because that's a big portion as well. One piece of data I thought was surprising was the administration retention rate, it has dropped and is lower, in about the 65 to 70% range. So, um, not just teacher concerns, but administrative shortages as well. Then the conversation shifted to more of the Department of Education, Board of Educational Examiners, ideas of things they're trying to do to address these problems for us, at a statewide level. Uh, quite a few ideas were thrown out, and things they're beginning to work on, but they're really trying to do at a global level is try to relax some of the rules in the state of Iowa without lowering the quality of the teacher preparation. Uh, some of those examples, um, would be grants and reimbursements for teachers, um, to encourage people to go into the field, especially in targeted areas, such as special education, um, where the shortage is of, um, the greatest need right now. Uh, speaking of special education, trying to take the licensure, um, and make it more of an, of all-encompassing special education licensure instead of, um, so categorical, which narrows the field, um, who's eligible to teach in certain areas. Um, additional alternative licensure programs, um, work-based learning options for people to, um, move from the work world into the teaching world as well. Um, lots of different ways they're looking at it. The main thing they're doing right now is a teacher task force, has been created at the state level, and plan to make recommendations to the legislature, hopefully in this next legislative session, about things that can be done statewide. So, interesting data, interesting update, uh, from the DE. One thing that also came up, I thought was interesting, is, um, Iowa's one of only eight states, um, across the country that do not publish teacher shortage data, or has not in the last five years. Um, so I think that'd be something we can talk to legislators about, to be more transparent about that data, um, as well. Uh, then they moved into the state financial situation, um, as many of you have seen in the news media recently, the state of Iowa's in a good spot, um, financially right now. Fiscal year '21, uh, saw 11% growth from the previous year. Uh, fiscal year '22 is off to a good start, strong first quarter as well. Um, currently a surplus of over $1.2 billion, um, as part of the state of Iowa situation. So as we approach that legislative, um, session, just really want to make sure we encourage legislators to keep public education as part of the, um, con- conversation, as far as how to use the funds that are available, um, as many groups will be advocating that way as well. Um, as far as looking ahead to the fiscal '22, '23 school year, and fiscal year, um, a lot of talk in the state about hoping enrollment starts to bounce back, uh, they really think the state of Iowa enrollment last year, we all know, took a dip, um, in schools, and expect that to be the case again this year. Certified enrollment's still being finalized over the course of the next week, and they'll much better idea after that, with the, um, and hope is that, as enrollment rebounds, hopefully funding will come along with that too, so. And then the final piece of the executive leaders that all kind of tied into is preparation for our next legislative session, um, as we get ready for the next round, um, starting in January, just to get, kind of start to encourage each board member to be thinking about ways we can advocate for our priorities we decided on this summer, but also some specific things that came up here, um, that can help support our, uh, priorities we have as well. So, a couple of things that were suggested, things we've done in the past as well, just making sure we reach out to our legislators, um, before the session starts, because once the session begins, they get extremely busy and overwhelmed with all the, the feedback and responses, so months of November and December are great times to reach out. Um, thanking them for their leadership, sharing our priorities as a district, our need areas, our concern areas, um, and just make sure they understand, um, really the workforce shortage is such a, a high priority for us, um, not just statewide, but in our district, that we can give really specific examples of how that's being impacted for us, so. So those are kind of the highlights of the, um, administrative meeting we had last week, a very productive couple of days, lots of interesting points there as well. And then one last thing I'll just mention, I think everybody's aware, the, had a huge donation of trees to the district, um, not just at Linnmar, but every educator in Lynn County and Benton County, and our tree dispersment day was last Friday. Um, so huge thanks to the Monarch Research Project, the Planting Forward Project, local organizations that are doing everything they can to help, um, recover from the damage of the derecho, and help our community rebuild. Um, offered up to three, for those of you that aren't aware, offered up to three trees for every, um, school employee in Lynn County and Benton County. So we had a, a large number of our staff took advantage of that opportunity, um, we ended up dispersing 861 trees to our staff on Friday. Boulder Peak had trees lined up, um, all over the, um, the parking lot area, the process went very well, um, lots of happy, um, smiles, and lots of appreciation from folks coming through as well. So just want to make sure to thank Chris Gates and our Buildings and Ground staff, um, loading a semi of 861 trees, and then dispersing them throughout the afternoon, is a pretty big process. Um, our volunteer program, La Bicarletary, they were very instrumental in both of those steps as well, in loading the semis and passing the trees out. We even had one high school student come and volunteer part of the afternoon as well, so, um, a productive, productive day. And then Dan Ludwig and the Boulder Peak staff for hosting us and dealing with, uh, the additional traffic that they had at dismissal time, and the, the mess that came with the trees, with everything too, and great support. And then Gaila Burge just kind of coordinated all the communication to the staff, uh, took the survey information, coordinated everything, so lots of people to make that happen, um, is a fun process to, to go through, so. Just want to make sure to give that group credit publicly, because the, um, the generosity there is, is very impressive, and I can't imagine how many thousands of trees they donated throughout the area, um, over the course of the last week or two, and, um, we're appreciative to be part of that process, so. That is my update, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to, to take them at this time.
Going back to the teacher prep, being down 17%, um, I know that we had the guarantee interview, which I thought was a really awesome thing that we did with, uh, last year's students that were interested in education. Um, do we do anything with our students before, I mean, highlighting the choice that they've made and honoring that, and that's a great thing, but do we have, like, an academy-type program where we're talking about education careers and, and highlighting the different things you can do in the district while there's students throughout their experience here?
You know, there are child development courses and educational experiences they can get, not necessarily under the umbrella of an academy. Um, definitely things we've thought about doing too is more internal marketing to recruit students to go into that before, like you said, once they've made their decision, we can recognize them and, um, offer that guaranteed interview for them to come back to Linnmar in three, four, or five years over the timeframe maybe as well. Um, those are things we've talked about, teaching and learning department, human resources, about what else can we do, because that's kind of the first step of things we know we need to continue to build our own and attract our own.
Well, it's just, you know, when you think about the growth of STEM, one of the reasons that STEM is growing, aside from the need in the workforce, is, you know, we have Project Lead the Way, and we have these STEM academies that we've created, these opportunities for students to explore that through middle and high school. And, if we do that for other high-need areas like teaching, uh, then we don't just highlight the kids that made that decision, but we help them along that decision pathway. So that, I mean, I think that that's, we're helping ourselves, we're helping the kids find a passion that maybe they hadn't thought about, and we have so many buildings that they could go and have teacher-student experiences of what it's like, that I just think that's something to consider.
And, uh, actually, I was brought one of the ideas that came up in the Department of Ed and Board of Educational Examiners update as well, is more, uh, ways they could support community partnerships between, uh, high school students, community colleges, local colleges as well, to, um, kind of, market it and get those students that experience early on to, to do one of two things, either explore that a little bit, decide, yeah, that's something I want to do, consider more seriously, or, you know, a couple of days in preschool might be a good experience for somebody to say, nope, that is not for me. And then make tracks other direction as well, so, yeah, definitely some opportunities there to, to expand that, I think.
Okay. I'd love to hear those conversations and, and see what we can do to help those kids figure that out.
Yep.
That was my only question.
Anyone else with a question? Question, comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to our presentation from the athletic department.
As David and Tanya work their way to the front.
Yes, I couldn't even see you back there, I figured you were there somewhere.
Last board meeting, you got to hear from Kim Belt what our fine acti- fine arts activities and program. Um, tonight you get to hear more about our athletic department update, um, as well, so, um, I think everybody knows David and Tanya, we're glad to have them here. And then we'll continue our, um, educational focus with our next board meeting about the Venture Academics Program will be our highlighted area, so, with that, I think David and Tanya are ready.
Thanks, we got our trees. Tanya and I just planted them yesterday.
We planted them.
Thank you guys for having us. Um, so I'm Dave Brown, I'm the athletic director of the high school. I don't know, we're gonna, for the, I think.
I think I can just, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm the athletic director of the high school. Uh, Tanya and I obviously work, uh, hand-in-hand, uh, in almost every area, but we oversee different aspects, have different programming, so, uh, it's probably easier for her to list the ones that she is in charge of. She's also, um, halftime athletic facilities administrator, so, uh, I'll let you explain the sports that you do, and then all the rest of them are mine, it might be a little easier to avoid.
So I basically oversee one sport, one major sport per, uh, season, so in the fall I have volleyball, in the winter I have girls' basketball, spring I have girls' soccer, in the summer I have softball, and I do oversee our cheer and dance programs as well. And then with the athletic facilities part of it, um, I work really closely with the Aquatic Center, with Chris Gates and O&M, um, just working together on, especially with the stadium, uh, making sure things are up to speed, working up to code, I work with them, if I see something that needs to be fixed, I communicate with them, um, just making sure our facilities are in running order and work real closely with those groups. And then Kelsey Rassiter is our athletic secretary, she's really the boss of us, so, um, she does a fantastic job, this is her first year, uh, working with us, but she's been in the district, um, at Westfield and as a athletic coach as well.
She's doing great.
Yep. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll do this one, so, um, the conference we're in is the NBC conference, um, it's kind of hard and it's confusing with the levels of the conference, we're going to be the largest school and the largest class, uh, it just depends on how the, the athletic associations classify those, so we're either 4A or 5A, um, in all the sports we offer. Uh, there are two unions in Iowa, the Athletic Association, uh, the high school, Iowa High School Athletic Association is the boys' union, Iowa Girls' High School Athletic Association is the girls' side. Our conference has two divisions, uh, and that rotates every two years, so, so this year is the second year of our two-division block, and then next year we'll rotate to play different schools. Um, there'll also be a little bit of a change next year, uh, in that Waterloo East has made the decision to leave the conference, I don't know the name of that new conference in Des Moines, uh, they're going to go over to the Des Moines Conference, it's kind of, they, they've split up over there, uh, in the CIML, and they're going to go join that conference. So, it's been nice for us the last few years, we've had an even number of schools, which makes scheduling easy, um, and you can put yourself in the division, you kind of, you can cross over, so this is going to throw a little wrench into things, um, for a year or two, and then we'll, we'll see whether or not we're going to add another school in. Um, there may be another school, uh, that leaves, we may go to a super conference, these are things we've had talks with, uh, the NBC athletic directors about, how do we, how do we move forward as a conference and, um, and, and see how things look, and unfortunately, we had these schedules, uh, booked out till like 2056, somebody sat down and did them all, in all the rotations, and then we lost the schools, so we're back to the drawing board on that.
We have reached out to, as a conference, to three or four school districts that we feel like would be a good fit to replace Waterloo East, um, and there's maybe some slight interest from a few of them, um, but they're also happy where they're at, um, so obviously it's a process, so if one of those schools does want to join, it obviously wouldn't happen next year anyway. But hopefully we'll, you know, have some shifting, um, going on, or maybe we go to the super conference, um, and then it doesn't really matter if someone comes in or someone leaves, um, as far as scheduling, but, um, these will rotate, and when they do rotate every two years, they try to balance it to have three Cedar Rapids schools on one side and three Cedar Rapids schools on the other, at least two Dubuques on one, the other two on the other, Waterloo and Cedar Falls will be opposite, so they do try to balance that out, they may just switch, um, where they were at for the previous two years. Um, and just like everything else, like, depending on what your division's like, it might be loaded for one sport, depending on how talented it is, and not so strong, uh, in another sport, just depends, it's kind of ebb and flow, so. Um, this year, and for example, in the Valley Division for, I'm sorry, the Mississippi Division for volleyball, our side's loaded, Cedar Falls, Waller, City High, Liberty, Western Dubuque, they're all ranked in, you know, the top 10 in the state, so, uh, it's no night off, but it's good competition for us as well, it's a good conference to be This just kind of shows you, um, the numbers, this is based off of, um, last year, so some of these are a little bit more down than what we usually have, probably because of COVID, um, but on average, this is kind of where our numbers fit, and this is nine through 12, all of our levels, so like for football, that 130 represents our freshman team, our sophomore team, our JV and our varsity, uh, numbers. Um, and then you can look at the fall season compared to the winter, to the spring, to the summer. Um, you know, as somebody you commented earlier, uh, we, we have a no-cut policy, anyone that wants to participate in our sports can come out for those sports. Um, we love that, we embrace that, um, it does make it a challenge for some of the reasons that she mentioned, um, not necessarily just people having some opportunities to be on a club team, or always be able to come in an open gym with those opportunities, but, um, our district's been very, uh, nice to work with us when we needed to add another JV2 girls' and boys' soccer team, because our numbers were so high, um, they were, they allowed us to get another coach, they allowed us to buy more uniforms, they, we did a, a schedule for them. The difficulty becomes, a lot of our opponents, um, back on this backslide, do cut, um, and so they don't have two JV2 teams to play us, so, even though our district's working with us and trying to provide opportunities for our kids, we don't always have opponents to play, um, or in some situations, some of these people just don't have the participation numbers to come out. And so we've had discussions, that'll probably come down the road, about really developing a strong intermural program, not something that's taken lightly, but something that can maybe, um, offer those kids that don't always have those opportunities to get those starting spots or to participate, but to have a strong intermural program, and we've been in conversations with, um, some of the Des Moines schools, some schools that are the same size as us, what do they do that have had a strong intermural program, um, to keep those participation numbers alive? Um, and so that's something that we are currently working on, and have our conversations on, and hopefully we can get something developed in the next couple of years or two. And of course, that, you know, trickles down to other things too, uh, the, how, how, what's that going to look like, what facilities are we going to use, those types of things, and who's going to run it. Um, but those conversations are happening for the just reason of, we want to make sure that we have participation, um, for those kids that want to, to participate in the things that they love to do. Uh, this tradition, um, I just kind of threw some things on This tradition, I just kind of threw some things on here because I think it's really important. We have a lot of character development things that we do with our head coaches. Once a month, we, Dave and I, meet with all of our head coaches at seven in the morning, basically to get all of our coaches together, and because they don't get to see each other a lot. They learn from each other, what's working for you, what's not. We talk about things that we want them to do, conferences to attend, videos we send them, articles to read, things that we want them to try to help develop not only their character, but character development on their teams. We talk about our high participation numbers, that went back to that last slide. You know, the last 10 years, we're averaging around 1,400 of our kids in our building, which is around, close to 2,300, are participating in one sport or more. So that's 63% of our student body at some point is involved in student athletics. So it's very important, it's a big part of our school. And then we have educational athletics. Again, we work with our coaches on different things, we promote, you know, national letter of intent, we're not just one of those schools that just sign the D1 kids, or even just athletics. We've had clubs and organizations, we've had, a few years ago, we had a baton thrower that got a scholarship to go to Florida as a baton thrower, trap shooter, people that get scholarships or things like that, we want to recognize those people. So even though it's not money scholarship like D1 sometimes gets, we recognize all kids, NAIA, junior college, division three, division two, one, two, three, anybody. So we do three or four of those each year, and that's the far upright corner picture there of some student athletes signing their letter of intents. And we invite their families to attend those, take a lot of pictures, and promote those kids. And then at the bottom, I just put kind of our accomplishments we've had over the history of Limar Athletics. We've won 161 conference championships, we've had 181 state champions or first-team all-state athletes. If you've been to the high school and you're entering into the gym, all those pictures that are on the wall are our state champions or first-team all-state athletes. And in time, those will eventually be recognized and honored in our Hall of Fame. And then we've also won 125 team state champions, and then we also have 14 Gatorade Athletes of the Year. I don't know if we lead the state, but we've got to be pretty and close with that many. That's really hard to be the Gatorade Athlete of the Year in that sport of all classes across the state. And then we also have had five Gazette Athletes of the Year as well. So we have a lot of tradition, a lot of kids that we like to promote.
So the culture piece is something that we started working on three or four years ago, five years now, with our head coaches. So it's part of our monthly meetings with head coaches, which is just a great opportunity for us all to get together, and we sit like this, and we just have conversations about different things that are going on. It's not really Tanya and I directing a group, it's a chance for us all to share, because we have coaches that have experience in a lot of different areas. Some are great with culture, some are great with the Xs and Os, and how can we get them together so they can learn off each other? So, but as part of that process, we develop what we call our five pillars that we want to go out as a group and try to support within our team. So positivity, hard work, sportsmanship, altruism, and integrity are the five things that we came up with. It took us, it took us probably six months to come up with what our pillars were going to be, and we had a lot of great discussions about it. Altruism is one that I love the most, and especially when you think back to the Durach Show, and at the time with COVID also going on, all of our teams wanted to get out there, and the coaches really wanted to be a part of helping in the community, even at that risk that they had with COVID out there. And I think we saw that at Cedar Rapids in general, but it was good to see our coaches and teams take that on. One other thing we've implemented from our talks with coaches is what we call five-minute talks. And basically what that is, and you saw the numbers from a few screens ago, our coaches keep track of all the kids on their team and make sure that there's interaction every week with every student athlete by a coach. So if we've got four coaches on staff and 100 kids, they're going to kind of map out who's talking with who and keep track of that, so that we at least get a chance to talk with every kid every week. It's hard, you know, I was a coach for many years, and so was Tanya. You get a team of 35 kids, and you find that you're coaching the top 10, and maybe you don't, maybe you're working with the lower-end kids, and the middle-of kids are the ones that are missed as far as conversation goes. So we really do push that, especially with our younger coaches that just start off. I mean, that's a big one that we get involved with, helping them track. Just a small conversation of, you know, how's your week going? I see you doing this, here's something you can work on. That's a relationship builder. And I, you know, I'm a parent, and I find that when my son comes home or my daughter comes home from a practice and they say, how's it going? If they say to me, well, I don't know, I haven't heard from the coach in a while, that to me is something that I don't want my son or daughter to go through. So just having that conversation from the coaches to the kids and keeping track of it every week, because it's hard. It's hard to remember whether or not you've talked to this or that person. So we do work with them on that, and that's a really good thing that's come out of our meetings with coaches.
And with those five-minute talks, they really have evolved over the last couple of years because of COVID and because of, you know, the mental health issues and things like that. So a lot of times, those five-minute conversations might not have anything to do with the sport that they're coaching. It's just like, how's it going at home? How are you handling schoolwork? How are you doing with this? And it just allows those kids to have another person that they trust, that they can have an open conversation with, and it really means a lot to those kids, and even to the coaches to get to learn those kids outside of being a student athlete.
So what do Tanya and I, and what do we do for the most part of our days? We're working with all of our head coaches for the most part. Obviously, the way things work, we've got, I think, 100, 100-plus coaches on staff. We like to work directly with the head coaches and try to filter things down from there onto their staffs. So throughout the week, you know, even today, I was on the phone with three or four of my coaches, some in-season, some out of season. But we are in charge of the coaches. We like to consider ourselves their coach in many aspects, especially when they're going through situations, even when they're having success. We like to be a part of that. So really, our relationship with them is from our preseason meetings all the way through the end-of-season awards, is when we have them in-season. We do walk through practices, we try to get out to practices as much as we can, depending on kind of what our schedules are. When a coach is in-season, we talk to them every day. I mean, there's rarely a day that goes by that I haven't talked to Tim Lovell, the football coach, or Kyle Hoffman, my cross-country coach. And I know Tanya talks, but we talk to our coaches every day about things, kind of a five-minute talk for us every day with them is what it turns out being. But we do do the once-a-month meetings with them. Our head coaches help in evaluating their assistance. Tanya and I get involved with that, but for the most part, they're the ones that are with them every day, and we want their feedback to try to make those evaluations productive. We do use the School Board Approved Assessment. It's a tool that we use at the end of the season, and the reason I like it, coming from a different school, when I came here, it was already in place, it really allows us to have conversations with the coaches about things we see, things they can improve on, and it really opens, you know, just going through that list of all the things that are on there makes it really worthwhile.
So as we continue to grow as a district, I would probably like to take that obstacle word out, maybe put challenges better as a word there. But these are some of the things as we grow that we find as challenges that we have to kind of figure out. I mean, some of these we're dealing with right now, like the busing situation. That's just district-wide and statewide. And Brian and Brent out at Transportation have been great, they've been trying to solve every single situation that has come up. If we have to be a little bit more flexible with our leave times, leave it a little earlier, leave it a little later, so we can make sure that we have a bus and a driver, our coaches have been very flexible about that. So we feel very fortunate compared to some of our other colleagues in our conference, what they're dealing with. So we're dealing with busing right now, and as we continue to grow and our numbers continue to grow, obviously, we'll need more transportation, so we need to kind of figure that out. Again, I mentioned teams and opponents to play. Some people just don't have the participation numbers like we do, or they cut, and so they don't have as many levels as we do either, so that becomes a challenge. And so that's why we're looking at intermural program. Officials, we're dealing with an official shortage right now, even though at every event I'm at, it seems like we have a lot of officials up in the stands. But we do have a shortage of officials. I've had to postpone or cancel only a handful of events this fall because of the lack of officials. I'm trying to promote it, we try to promote it with our young student athletes that want to go into some kind of athletic sport management field. Hey, this would be a great job for you, it's easy money, you know, just doing softball and baseball games in the summer, so you can make $3,000 to $4,000 just doing that. But it's becoming harder and harder. I'm really worried about the, we have a big group of officials that are on the retirement end of things, and I'm afraid when that happens, we're not going to have this new generation want to step in and do that. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with that. And of course, our own facilities, we have awesome facilities, but obviously, like tonight, for example, it's raining, we had to kind of figure out where our volleyball teams are going to practice, where our three football teams are going to practice, was cross-country going to be outside, what we're going to do with the weight room, so we had to kind of be flexible with that. And our coaches work really well together with that, it's just a kind of a talk-through conversation that we have to have with them, and, you know, obviously, varsity kind of gets priority, we kind of work our way down. But it would be nice to have, not to have that problem, and then when we get to the spring, it's even a larger problem, because we have 600 athletes in our spring sports, trying to figure out what we're going to do on a rainy day, gets to be a little bit more difficult. And then obviously, as we keep growing, we have more events, we need more workers, we got to pay more coaches, we need to buy more uniforms. It's like the ref shortage, it's getting hard to find coaches or people that want to coach. I've had three or four, I think, positions now posted out there for eight to 12 months, and I haven't had any bites. So I was able to just send a mass email to everybody in the district saying, hey, we have these positions open, anyone interested? And then some people came back and said, yeah, but I don't have my coaching license, and I said, I can work with you on that. The state, you know, allows like kind of a grace period. So that did help, but it's becoming harder and harder to not only find officials, but also coaches as well.
I think it's important to note that it's not just lower-level coaches that it's hard to find. The coaching pool at the high school level has really thinned out, and I think part of that is club. I think a lot of coaches are just deciding to do club sports, they might pay them more. I do think they have less drama they have to deal with, with fans, with parents at the club level. And so I think a lot of coaches just aren't choosing to coach in high school. The numbers of coaches, the numbers of people that we have applied for high-level head coaching positions would be shocking to see. And so we do get out and recruit as much as we can, but, you know, the three big ones that Tanya and I look at, busing is something where there's got to be people there to drive the bus, it's officials, the people have to be there to be able to officiate, and then finding coaches is three things that I've certainly seen change in the last 10 years since I've been an athletic director, and it's trending that way. So finally, here are the last few things, and I've got my glasses on, but I can't read super well. Just a quick update on kind of what's going on right now in the fall. Our football team is now 6-1. They have a game this week in Davenport, and then they play Prairie at home, which will be the last home game of the season. We do have a chance of hosting on the 29th, and we haven't hosted district football since I've been here, I'm not sure the last year that it happened. So that's really exciting. Coach Lovell is doing a great job with the kids and building the community. Volleyball this year, we had high numbers, we had 50 freshmen out for the volleyball team, and you can kind of do those numbers in your head when you think through two freshmen volleyball teams with six people playing at a time, that's 12 kids playing on a given night. If you keep that many on the bench to try to get, I mean, we're talking, we're playing 25 kids, we've got 50 out. I think that kind of fits into what you were saying. Are we a no-cut school or are we a participation school? Because we're not cutting, but are we finding opportunities for kids to participate?
So to try to alleviate that and try to get those volleyball kids an opportunity to play that weren't maybe on your A or B team, is what we call them. I reached out to like Kennedy and Prairie because they had similar high numbers, and I think our numbers were a little higher this year because as eighth graders, they didn't have the opportunity to play, and so they wanted to try as freshmen. But I reached out to Prairie and Kennedy, they had high numbers, so we just, Kennedy took a night, Prairie took a night, and I took a night, and we just did a reserved night for those kids, so they could just play, and we just did round robin, and they just played against kids that maybe have the same skill as them, but just play the game that they wanted to play, and so they're not just sitting all the time. So those are the types of things that we tried to do to get those kids participating.
Our cross-country team is doing well, our girls ran really well last week, better than expected, and so they've got districts coming up here on the 20th. Haley Kimmel is a junior swimmer for us, recently signed to attend the University of Iowa on a swimming scholarship. The regional meet comes up here November 6th. Kayden Postma just got done playing in the state golf tournament, and I believe he finished 22nd. I don't remember exactly what his number was, but they just participated this last weekend. Moving on to the winter, we have 124 boys currently signed up for basketball. We did start, similar to kind of what Tanya's doing, which I think her idea with the freshman volleyballs might morph into this a little bit, but we started an intermural league for ninth-grade boys' basketball players. We'll have between 50 and 60 out every year. We have two teams, so, you know, if you do the numbers, that's maybe 22 kids that get a chance to play on those two teams. What are we doing with the rest of these kids? And the intermural league worked great, we've done it three years now, we basically work with other schools that have large numbers, and we have four Saturdays where those kids get together and play three games, and we try to split up our teams so more kids are playing more time. And kids want to shoot baskets, they want to score baskets, they want to have fun, and that's what we're trying to promote with that. The district was very supportive of that, and I appreciate it, and we were able to hire a coach for that intermural league, and that allows us to make that happen. So bouncing out, trying to get everybody a chance to participate, and also try to compete. I mean, that's kind of the world we live in. How do we do both of these things and make them work? Girls' basketball's got good numbers this year. Bowling, the sign-up's a little low, but I think those numbers will go up once we get closer to the season. We do have 59 wrestlers with four girls this year, and the girls will be wrestling as a part of the boys' team. I think down the road with Iowa, having a girls' wrestling team now at the university, I think that we'll see the athletic associations open that up at the high school level too. I would guess that'll be in the next two to four years.
I think the girls' union is looking for 50 schools in the state that says they will sanction it, which means if they sanction it, then you are having your own girls' team, your own full lineup, your own coach, your own practice time, own state tournament. If we sanction it right now, we would maybe have four girls out, but maybe if we have meetings with girls and they know they're not going to be wrestling against other boys, we may have more participation coming down the road. So that's, I see that happening sooner than later, so I think that's a good thing for, add another sport in the winter for the girls.
And the boys' swim team, we did have Aiden Carstensen and Cooper Callahan, who just got named to the USA Swimming All-American Team. That's a combination of academics and the times that they do when they're swimming. And then Ian Stefan also qualified to be on the national swim event, but they'll actually have an Austin, Texas, in December, they'll miss about a week of our season to go do that, and that's a really, that's a really big thing, so it's cool for those guys. I think that's it. I guess we rambled a little bit.
He had a lot to say, we're glad.
We are.
Any questions, comments?
Go ahead, Tom.
So the first question I have is a little bit sensitive, but how are we addressing the relationship between parents and coaches and trying to make that mutually successful for everybody? And how can we capture parent feedback in a way that's constructive and useful and doesn't necessarily come across, as my kid's not getting playing time, because maybe there's some important nugget in there that's getting missed, right?
So there's always an emotional element that we work through when we're working with parents, right? And I understand that, and we've got kids, and so I get it, that when it's in the moment and you see your kid and he's frustrated, that's an emotional moment for you as a parent. So how do we work through getting to a point that we can actually hear what they're really trying to get to? Sometimes it takes two or three phone calls with parents to get to the point, we always try to listen, because you're right, there are nuggets that come out of that. We've entertained concepts before on sending out end-of-season surveys to parents, like, hey, what'd you think about the season? The way it's turned out for us is we do do that when we lose a coach. So like our head football coach resigned last year, I was hiring a new one, I emailed all the parents and all the students, we set up a Google form where they could provide us information on what are you looking for in your next coach? Is that if you frame it in what are you looking for in your next coach, you can actually find out a lot of information on what you didn't like with the former coach, right? And that can kind of help direct what we're looking for when we go after the coach. So, so it, it turns out that we do it more at the, at the junctures where somebody moves on, we're looking to hire somebody new as opposed to sending it out every season. Although I know some schools do, I'm not sure in the MBC do. I know when I was in Spencer, I think Esteville sent out that at the end of every season, you know. What, what do you think? How did the season go in that type of a situation?
We also do have a protocol kind of in place for all of our, if they want to have a meeting with the, if a player has, student athlete has a problem playing time or whatever. We ask that they have a meeting first with the coach, have that conversation. If after a few days or whatever, they feel like it's still not better, then the parent and the student athlete and the coaches have a meeting. If after that point, it's still something that's not there, then that's where we sit down, same, same parents, student athlete, coaches, and then us. You know, this is my 17th year here and very seldom have I had, I've had those meetings, but very seldom have I had those because it makes me feel like my coaches are addressing it and it's not getting to us. We also kind of ask our coaches, a lot of them do implement this 24-hour rule, kind of, after an event, win or lose, frustrated, whatever, give yourself 24 hours and then set up a meeting if you would like to. A lot of times, you know, you run out of motion, you kind of say things, don't think things through. So that's really helped form that relationship with the parents and the coaches. You're always going to have, you know, a bad apple in the, in the group, but...
And I think some of the frustration that you're trying to, I, I think it's coming from what you're saying also, which is, you know, everybody wants to see their kid play, right? And we only have one sophomore boys' basketball team and 40 sophomores down. Then we're only playing 10 or 12 kids and there's nothing we can do. There's nobody else that has another sophomore team for us. We don't have any other options to get those kids on the floor, which is why I think an intramural program makes a little bit of sense here. Because, because as parents, you want to go and you want to see your kid score 10 baskets. You, you truly don't care if it's in a varsity game or if it's an intramural game. You want to see your kid happy and enjoy their time with their friends. And so, so that's really, you know, to get to the point of what are people concerned about for the most part, I think it's kind of right here. When they're sitting at home, their kids are sad because they're not playing or they're not on tape and they just want to see them play.
I think for me, it was more like a communication thing. As you get to the high school, it's kind of expected that your kid is coached by your coach. And so that relationship is between the two of them. And it is, like you said, right, like the expectation is first that the student athlete meets with their coach. And so maybe if parents just had the opportunity to give you that, like, this is what went really well this season, this is something I went, wish was maybe different. It might not always be playing time. It might be, I didn't feel like there was appropriate supervision between the freshman girls and things got a little crazy all the time, right? Like, it could be anything. So I have a freshman daughter. They can get kind of crazy. That was why I used that example. So I think in a way that we can still kind of, I don't know that protect is the appropriate word, but protect our coaches from that emotional outburst, but still allow parents to feel heard and that their kid's experience matters to whether it's that sport or to you guys or whoever.
I think one thing that, and I don't think the general population of people knows how many times that Tanya and I are on the phone with a parent, talking to him about just that, right? I'm having an issue and I'm trying to work through it as a parent. And then we can advise them, like, like the relationship that's important to us is the one between the athlete and the coach. I mean, that's the one that has to sometimes be fixed, be healed, and move on. And a lot of times, we find ourselves advising parents on, okay, here's how we can do this, right? And, and even meeting with the kids after we talk to the parents, I mean, that's kind of what, day to day, those are the things that we do in the office, is, is try to take that information and those nuggets and say, we can help you. It might be best to follow it this way. Let me talk to your son or daughter, you know what I'm saying? So we hope that our, our door is opening up. And we do get a lot of calls from people that, that do have a little concerns like that and try to work through it.
My other two questions were about certification and continuing education. You had talked about how we have, are facing a coaching shortage across the board. Do you see anything from like maybe a statewide organization that is incentivizing people to become certified coaches? Like, it's not an easy feat, especially if you're not an educator, right? Like, that's a lot of your own personal time that you're having to dedicate, right? And you have to pay Kirkwood for it. So have you, is there anything?
I do know that Jane Berger at the girls' union has had initial conversations with the BOE and Department of Ed about, you need to work with us here. Like, how can we get more people certified? Like, it's kind of a, they can do it all online now. You don't even have to go to Kirkwood for a weekend. But it's, it's time consuming and it's busy and it's, you know, a lot of money upfront. And so I know those conversations are happening between the athletic associations and the BOE and Department of Ed. So we're hopefully in something soon. We'll come down the road, like, can they? I knew that they have a one-year extension, which we can hire a coach now who's working on it. And then a year from now, they have to have it or they can't continue to coach. So it's not as expensive upfront by doing it that way. But I do know that the athletic associations feel our pain, like, I understand that it's, it's hard. And we probably have more coaches who aren't educators than are, which is sad in my eyes. But there's also a lot of demands on our educators now and everything's, just like sports, everything's become a year-round. Teachers are the same way, if you're doing it right. And so adding coaching onto whatever they're doing, educating is, is, is hard. Especially if you have families and other obligations, things like that. So those conversations are happening, so hopefully the state will work with that, so making that a little easier.
And the reason I was asking about continuing education is because I think what's covered in that course is incredibly important, right? Like, the things that are important too are really like, I'm not a certified coach, my husband is, but they're really like beaten into your, you're beaten over the head with those really high touch point things that are important. And so once I have that certification, do, does Linmar work to, with the continuing education of kind of, as a reminder, what you learned in coaching certification?
Yeah, we do follow, I mean, they have, they have the Cushing course every year. We do mandatory reporter, blood work, pathogen things, things that we do.
CPR certification. But there also is on the National Federation of High School Sports, all, like, tons of free courses. Like, I just, I go on there, you know, whenever I have a little bit of time, downtime, whenever that is. But I just watch one on mental health, just for athletes. It was geared toward athletes. And so I just send that link on to the coaches. I can't require them to do it, but, you know, I would hope that one or two would just take the time. And they're, they're short, they're 15 to 20 minute videos, so they get to the point. Stress, anxiety, you know, there's all kinds of different topics out there. So that's a great resource that we've used to continue that. You know, there's different coaching conferences that they can go to. If it fits into their schedule, I think they can always learn from that. And then they also, at the end of every season, they have their all-conference end of the year coaches meetings where they get to kind of network with the other head coaches of the same sport in our conference and they get to utilize that as well. So those are some of the things that we're doing.
Thank you so much. Sorry, hopefully.
I've got a couple of questions for you. One is, we're talking about the cost of becoming certified to coach. Is, is that something that the district could reimburse for potentially? Or is that, would that be a no-no?
I believe we could. I've not ever really had that conversation or looked into that piece. So that's something that, well, I'm not sure if they consider that that's a resistant or let's give a barrier.
There's probably some, we have a meeting, oh, that's certainly us on that. I think it's $385 to get your, close to $40 to get, because you have to fight years, but...
Yeah, I would be curious, and it certainly would be like for me, if I was thinking, well, this is something I'd really like to do, but if perhaps that was a barrier for me.
Which it is for several.
Yeah, for, you know, that's a lot of money. So I think that that could, you know, be, you know, it's not going to solve, you know, the world's problems or anything. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
That's quite a point, that we have to look at everything differently with the workforce shortage.
Yes.
And this is another example, things we haven't had a look at in the past, but we may have to in the future to, to problem solve and be proactive too.
Yeah. And then my other question is on intramurals. I remember we talked about this last year. And so I'm wondering, how much progress have we made on that in the last year? And I know that, I'm sure that COVID presents, you know, many barriers, but I'm just, you know, is it, you know, are we making progress in that we're kind of ready to do some things after COVID perhaps, you know, recedes a little bit? Or is it, is it really just kind of we're talking, in the talks still?
No, so it was two years ago that we met, and now it's hardly been a year.
Oh, wow.
So that was around the time that we started, we had one year under our belt with the ninth grade intramural program, where we played other schools. And so we've had a couple of years to do that and it's, it's been very well received. But that again is now playing against other schools. So how do we frame that in such a way that, that it's just for Linmar?
Right.
We do, we are doing research, we are talking to other schools in Des Moines to find out if there's a template. Like, what are you guys doing, right? What we're finding is that not everybody has, they have intramural little pockets. Like, they might have it for one sport, they might have it for a different, but they don't have a program that's an intramural program. And I do think that, that we both believe, not in all of our sports, because some of our sports aren't such that, that everybody's not getting a chance to participate. So where we're at is we're going through all of our sports and we're saying, what would, what would a perfect situation look like with this sport, right? What would a perfect situation look like if we were going to? And we like to call it team selection. So we're going to select, like we've done with ninth grade basketball, a red and a black team, and then you get selected in the intramural league. How do we, how do we set it up so that it works here? And I, I think the, really where we run into a roadblock is with our facilities. We, we don't have space. And, and I know that we've got the 5-6 buildings, which are great, and we can, we can go over there and practice, but we can't send our ninth graders over there. They can't drive. And so, and then we don't have the shuttle necessary, a little work all the time to get them there. So there are some roadblocks in the, in the way of not having things on campus that are accessible to us during season. We, we talked a little bit about doing, what if we did, you know, basketball intramurals in the spring, where the gyms are a little more open? And then that runs into all the soccers that are doing things. I mean, something that you may not know is that many of our sports go out and rent facilities to practice in the offseason. So, and I, and I say practice, it's not practice, it's an open, it's an open facility where kids get a chance, because we don't have space in the high schools. So I know Corvus Courts is something that, that baseball uses and soccer uses, the SC United facility. And we're paying for that yearly, just to give them the same opportunities that other schools are getting. So, so the one thing that we kind of run into is, is where are we going to put these things? How can we, and we puzzle fit what we have now, how can we add more into it to make it work? It's really a roadblock for us to, to be able to be that open-minded and say, hey, let's go with this. That's kind of where we're at. But we are, we are putting more emphasis into it. I know that we've talked about it at the Athletic Council meetings a few times about, you know, let's get something in writing that is a Linmar proposal for how it would work. And so that's kind of where we're at.
We also want to make sure that the intramural program is, is taken serious. It's not just a joke. It's not just throw the ball out and they run up a down and, you know, kind of like recess. We're not going to do that. Like, we want it to be something that's meaningful and has purpose and they feel valued.
We want parents to come. We want it to be an event. We want, you know, it, my son's a good example. He's probably not going to play varsity this year or maybe not even JV. And I just like to go watch him play, you know, and he's got a lot of friends that would also like to play. And it really doesn't matter to us if it's against other kids from Linmar or whatever. We just want to see him have fun and play. So how can we set that up to make that work? I think that's the next step for us as we continue to evolve.
I have a question. Yeah. You talked about girls' wrestling. Are there other sports that you're seeing that are picking, getting traction within the state? And whether here or in Des Moines, like lacrosse or rugby or anything like that, this kind of picking up?
The girls' union, I think, is a, is a, archery?
When I was in Spencer, Iowa, we had 225 archers.
I think she said, she's had more schools contact her about archery than anything else.
I think with adding girls' wrestling, you know, I think that's why they kind of have this number of 50 schools that have to say, we're going to support a team. I think they're going to find other sports that come out and say, okay, that's the, that's what we need to have. Oh, we've got 50 schools in archery. And I think that'll, I think that'll happen quick. And I, I don't know. I don't know if more sports are going to come on board. I know that there's a push out there in the club world to have, you have rugby's and maybe lacrosse and different things that are out there. But I, I don't, I, I don't think they have anything in their mind of not doing it. I, I think they've got to keep equity in mind, which is why I think girls' wrestling is great. It allows us to have a girls' sport, girls have an option. But I don't know if anything would hold them back other than trying to keep equity in place.
Yeah.
Would archery be for girls and boys?
Yeah, it's a big deal.
I know it is.
In Spencer, it was like, it was a big, huge. They're good. It's great.
Well, if you can make that happen, I have a third grader that would be really excited about that.
I think they used to shoot archery in the basement of the high school.
They did.
He just started, so he's very, that'd be exciting.
Yeah, again, it comes back to, you know, facilities and what, how would we do it, where would we do it, all kinds of stuff.
Well, and they're not going to do it in the basement of the high school.
I don't think so. This is scary down there.
So that brings me, I do have a question. And so I know, I've talked to Tanya on the facilities committee, and I don't think we've talked while we've been in there. I know we're having those discussions as part of the facilities committee of what the needs are. And I'm excited about the next meeting and what AVN is going to come back with after all those conversations. But I think having that curriculum, that intramural, like, what does it look like? Because my, my question then goes to, I mean, do we have to hire more coaches that you just told us we can't find? And like, what does the whole program cost to create? And I'm totally on board with if, if we put it in the facilities plan, if that comes together. We've had those conversations on the committee, so I think that's, that is in the works. But then the other side of it, like, how much does it cost to actually create, Tanya, like you said, a serious intramural program that has worth the time and celebrates our students?
The nice thing about that is because it's not a sanctioned sport that we're getting from other schools, it would be us hiring people based on our internal control versus having to have a coach endorsement. Now, we might want to say that they have to at some point, but, but really, we could go through our, you know, we're comfortable with our processes, how we go through hiring coaches and getting to that point. But it wouldn't be as, you know, it could be a teacher that is able to do that without getting a coach endorsement if it's in your notebook.
That's good to know. I think that's helpful.
And as far as refs and things like that, I mean, we wouldn't schedule like refs that we would for other, you know, we maybe, there's any high school kids that are interested in refing and we pay them significantly less than we would like a normal ref, just to get their experience. Or even Delta would just get up and down the floor and ref and see these kids play. So the cost, I think, would be minimum.
I, I do think though, that it's important to note that we're really busy, like, we're super busy. So we would probably be putting something forward that would include an intramural director that necessarily wouldn't be us at the events all the time. We would love to help manage it and oversee it. But we've got a really good connection with the University of Iowa now, those graduating students with sports management degrees. And somebody that's 24 or 25 that wants to get in to the athletic director role would be a really good fit for this type of concept that we're looking at. So I don't know if I should have thrown that in or not, but we think this is great and we really think it's an effort. But, you know, five nights a week when we're at the school, we're thinking, oh, I don't know if we can do enough, so.
Well, I look forward to seeing both sides of the plan come together. So, because I've largely heard so far, just as part of facilities. So, thank you.
Anything else? Just thank you for all you do. It's amazing. We really do appreciate your...
Can we just stay here?
All right, we'll move on to 501, discussion of attendance at Iowa School Board and UEN annual meetings. All right, you want to start off when it is a little bit?
I can go through some of the basic logistics for you for IASB, the annual conference. I think everybody is pretty much aware of the, the basic schedule. And there's a handout at your spot also with more and more details in the schedule if you haven't been on the website yet. Essentially this year, the conference is on Wednesday, November 17th, and then Thursday, November 18th. Wednesday, November 17th is technically the pre-conference, where some of the larger sessions to go to. And then Thursday is the, the actual annual conference with a lot more breakout sessions and choices there as well. I did, hoping in the flyers, well in your packet, about the UEN annual dinner and meeting as well. They tend to, they try to schedule that on the first night of the IASB conference to catch people while they're in town. So that'd be another option for people to attend if they're there on Wednesday. Our initial conversation right now is just to kind of gather how much interest people have. The timing of this has gotten really, really tight since what it used to be for elections in September. So we have plenty of time before November to coordinate who can go, which day, or both days, or not at all. We can register plenty of time. And now with the board elections November 2nd, it's a really quick turnaround obviously before the 17th and 18th. So we know we won't want to finalize anything until that point. But just to help with our planning and help with our coordination, so just a good conversation to start off as far as what level of interest people have or even availability based on your schedule. I guess the other thing is you do not have to go for all of it. If you can go for Thursday, but not Wednesday for your schedules, we certainly understand that. If you can't make it at all, I understand that as well. But we hope people can attend at least part of it. It gives a great opportunity to learn and connect with other board members across the state and learn from them as well as the presenters too, so. And then come back on the November 10th organizational meeting, we'll make the final commitment and we'll scramble around, get our registration, everything else set up right after that for everybody at that time. So what you say today, you're not held to, just going to give us a rough idea of kind of what everybody's thinking early on or any questions you may have too.
I would just like to add to that, that if you can't go, that's fine. If you do go, please be committed to what, what we're doing there and participate in the different possibilities, because there's many different presenters. And if there's just a few of us that goes, we can share that information with everyone. So if you can't go because of work or some other thing, we'll make it work. Plus though, while we're there, if we can spread ourselves out a bit so that we can attend more things that we think look good, that's another idea.
Don't go around the table or what?
Yeah, we could do that. Are you thinking about?
I'm planning on attending both days.
Both days, okay. How about for you, Clark? Do you have any idea at this time? Haven't decided. Okay?
Um, it is my intention to intend, attend on Thursday. I did want to call attention to the fact that the pre-convention day on Wednesday, November 17th is when there's new board member onboarding workshops. So we will absolutely have at least one brand-new member to our board and maybe more. And so I would encourage candidates that would be new board members to consider attending. It looks like there's one in the morning and then another in the afternoon, so if one works better than the other.
I would second that. That was incredibly helpful.
Yeah.
That's, I think it's, it would be very helpful, you know, to just, if you can't do both days, at least do November 17th, because that is for all the new board members, all the new stuff, you know, so that you understand more about it. So that's a very good thing. I plan on both days. How about you, Rachel? Do you have any idea at this time?
Yep. If I'm re-elected, then I absolutely intend to go both days.
Okay.
Both days.
Jim, you could just show up if you want. I mean, we wouldn't mind if you come.
I would stress the UEN dinner. To me, that's almost one of the highlights of the, of the whole thing, just talking to other UEN members.
And what UEN is, it is a group of the larger districts? And what UEN is, it is a group of the larger districts, so we talk about things that are common to larger districts, and we hear what their problems are and what ours are, we hear how they solve things, and it's very informational.
That's important, yeah, where the minority, like, so when you go to a conference like this, and it's for like over 300 school districts, there's a lot of sessions that can be more focused towards rural, too, so making those connections is great.
And it's nice, when you go to the UAN, UEN, that we, instead of sitting together, you pick a different table and hear from other districts, and find out what they're doing, and problems, or the positive things that are going on, so that always helps too, I think, when you go to the UEN. And I think we did that the last time we got to go there, everybody was at a different table and...
Okay. So we have a preliminary count, and we'll go from there and check back, and if things change, that's fine, just let us know.
I know the timing is tight, but it is really good learning, it's a good opportunity. Like Kara said, that we'll have at least one new board member, so it's an opportunity to connect with everybody and learn together as well. So then that, after not having the in-person session last year, it'd be nice to get back to this opportunity again, too.
Okay. We'll go on to the competition of, or, excuse me, completion of projects.
I make a motion to accept the Boulder Peak Intermediate School Project as complete and authorize final payment to Larson Construction in the amount of $68,457.07.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any questions about it? Not seeing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I make a motion to accept the Bowman Woods Media Center renovation project as complete and authorize final payment to Peak Construction Group in the amount of $7,066.07.
Second.
Clark, any questions about that one? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, open enrollment.
I make a motion to approve the open enrollment request as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions with us? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, so a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Okay, any comments, questions?
We're going to talk about new town ticketing.
We're going to talk about Oak Ridge. Before approval, one of the contracts you're going to, you've probably seen, is the 704.2. The hometown ticketing is, I had David and Tanya talk about that while they were here as well, something new we're looking at doing, very quick turnaround potentially of offering families, and anybody comes to games, the opportunity to not have to buy the paper ticket, wait in line, they could buy it on their phone and then have that scanned when they go into the actual event. So this is our first dabble in that world, and I think this will be more of the norm going forward than the current situation, so it's, JT's going to give me the stink eye here and now about saying this, but the goal, hopefully, is to have it ready to go for the last home football game, even in two weeks is a possibility or a choice for people right now, so.
That's possible.
Everybody's scrambling to see if they can pull that together as quickly as possible between athletics, our tech department, business office, everybody else too, so, so that's what that one is referencing, and kind of a new opportunity for us.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we need to vote on that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Carrie's. We're to board communication, and I just wanted to bring up our visit to Oak Ridge. It was awesome to get back in, in the building, see the kids and students, students doing their thing, and teachers and everyone else that makes the difference in the schools, it was, it was refreshing to say the least. Would others who were there, everybody, anyone like to comment?
I was very impressed with how they are accommodating the open space that they had, and they thought that they would have just all kinds of room, and they don't, because it's been filled, and it's been filled in such a manner that I really appreciated, especially with like, special education. And a lot, the thing I just really liked about it is, it is a true, took a group of students, but divided it up so that they could have more one-on-one with, with the teacher, and I was very impressed with that. And instead of being just sitting here like this, they can expand their horizons and communicate, and the teachers can share with that. I also like the fact that they meshed with their Spanish department, two rooms side-by-side, and reminded me of what we've done with Boulder Peak and Hazel Point, from the standpoint of when we had virtual learning, and in-class learning, they were all side-by-side, and they could just communicate back and forth to see what everybody was going, and they're doing that with their two, two Spanish classes there, and it was impressive how they have adjusted to accommodate the growth that they have had, and expand in such a way that you have more student-teacher contact in a, in a lot of different, lot of different areas.
Okay, expand on something there?
Sure.
So while it was really cool to see them take over the area formerly known as the sixth-grade pod, we also saw evidence of how there are areas of that building that are already full in that capacity, and so I think, we know, we talked about the work that the Facilities Committee has been talking about, and then maybe some of this goes into another iteration of a future Facilities Committee, so while it is nice to see them stretching their legs, it's like, you stretch one leg and you can't stretch the other, kind of situation out there, so.
Yeah, right now, they're enjoying it. Barry, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Rachel?
I didn't get to be there for the whole thing, but I too was not surprised really that the sixth-grade pod had been kind of overtaken already. They had one classroom that was not being used. So though we have, I think, as a district, done a really good job to address space issues, you know, with that fifth and sixth grade, you know, the intermediate building plan, and, and that's all been implemented, and it's been wonderful, but space continues to be at a premium in the district, and I think whoever is in the seat for the next four years, it's going to be a huge, a huge challenge that just, you know, continues, that we have to continue to work on solutions for.
Facility planning will always be a topic for us to continue with, yeah.
Brits, or something like that?
I was going to say what Clark said about just the opportunities that have grown in the sixth-grade pod, like, you know, the Lego, the Lego League Room and probably lead the way, and I like that. But I was also going to mention, you know, fine arts, their capacity, and it's great to hear how many students we have participating in fifth-grade orchestra and fifth-grade band, and knowing that, are they going to fit when they come over from Hazel Point? Or, you know, that's just something that we have to keep thinking on. But I do like, I will comment on a big positive with the cafeteria and how they're getting the students into that alternative cafeteria experience, where some of them go outside and some of them go over here while, when they're done eating, and it's like this added socialization and getting them up, and I like that, that we're thinking about different ways to socialize the students and get them, you know, through the lunchroom and not just sit here for 20 minutes and eat. So I thought that was another good way to kind of burn off some of that energy that we know they have before they get to their afternoon, so, overall, it was really nice.
It really was. Is there anything like that?
I don't have anything else, Dan.
All right, well, I think, I think we have, is there anything else that someone wants to bring up for communication?
Yes, I do. Since we had the both athletic directors here, it came to my attention Friday night, for those of you that are thinking of going to the Prairie game, that they're anticipating a huge number that night because of the records of both schools, they're even considering opening up the grassy area, they really think that there's going to be that many people